Thank you. All right, good evening, everybody. It is 6:03 on Monday, July 12, 2021. We are in the Nashua High School North Boardroom, and I'm calling this special meeting of the National Board of Education to order. Just a couple of housekeeping things before we get started. This is a special meeting for the purpose of personnel recommendations. We have a few of these every summer so that when we hire people to start in the fall, they're able to get up and running as quickly as possible. During our special meetings, we typically do not have public comments. There will not be public comments this evening because, again, this is us approving new hires that our head of HR have already approved. So, having said that, the other thing that I wanted to mention, and I don't see anybody doing it now, but I'm going to say it for the record. Our meetings are videotaped. They're available on YouTube and on the ETV's website. But we've had some people doing their own videotaping in the last couple of meetings. That's fine. I'm just going to ask that everybody not walk behind the U desk that we have here. We've had some people going kind of behind it, and it's -- it makes us feel -- not us, but it makes the kids especially feel uncomfortable, and it makes me feel uncomfortable having people behind the U when I'm trying to run the meeting and focus on all sorts of other things. So if people could please stay on the public side, I would appreciate it. And I think that is it for ground rules. Did I forget anything? I'm looking at Ms. Timmons because she's pretty good at reminding me.
You're good.
Okay. So, sorry, Ms. Timmons. So, thank you for bearing with me on that, and we can get going. I was just looking -- oh, it was right there. Okay, so this evening, the -- oh, roll call. Go ahead, Ms. Bishop.
Ms. Bishop is here. Ms. Gilio?
Here.
Ms. Raymond?
Here.
Ms. Odin?
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Mr. Guarino?
Here.
Ms. Zeeem?
Here.
Ms. Timmons?
Here.
Okay, thank you. Good job, everybody, in the middle of the summer. I'm impressed that we're all here. Ms. Timmons?
Can I just remind the chair that she forgot to mention our guests as well?
Oh, yes, sorry. And we also have superintendent Dr. McKinney. We have our new director of HR. Welcome to Diane Carey. And we have our assistant director of HR, Mike Bowes.
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 Bowes. I almost had it the first time. Welcome to our meetings. And I just wanted to give a shout out to Mr. Bowes. He's been kind of running the ship for the last couple of months on his own, so thank you so much. The end of the year is a particularly difficult time to have to do that.
Thank you.
All right. And again, welcome to Ms. Carey. We're excited to have you here. Yay. Okay, so the first thing on our agenda is administrative recommendations. This evening, we have a few recommendations, and the first one is for the -- the first one is for the principal for Sunset Heights Elementary School, and that is Erin Anderson. Dr. McKinney, is Ms. Anderson here? Great. Hi, Ms. Anderson. Would you like to come down to the U? You have permission to send. Ms. Odin, can you make sure that it's on? All right, thank you. Oh, Jimmy is on it. Wonderful, thank you so much. Welcome, Ms. Anderson. And so for people who might not be aware, typically when we have administrative hires, we ask the board if they would like to ask any questions or say anything. So, Ms. Zeeem, typically this is your committee. Did you have anything you wanted to say before I open it up?
Well, I think it would be wonderful if the -- I think I feel so good about tonight. Every candidate we have is -- this is wonderful. I have to -- I'm very happy with every candidate we have tonight. I think we're very fortunate, and certainly this lady is well-qualified. I'd love for her to say a few words and share with us for those who might not be lucky enough to have met her before.
Okay.
Well, I'm Erin Anderson. Am I on?
I can't hear it through the thing. Maybe if you're closer?
Okay. Now?
Uh-uh.
But I'm not a teacher. No, I'm just kidding.
Okay. Assistant principal voice, which is now the principal voice?
100%. So I, kind of walking back, began my teaching career in South Florida and had the opportunity to teach multiple grades in very diverse schools. And I feel like I really gained perspective and a wealth of knowledge there. And then, since I grew up in Nashua, I felt the calling to come back here. And I was a teacher team facilitator at Mount Pleasant for four years, where I really worked with staff to move forward into new district initiatives and coached teachers and worked with scheduling and assessment and all of those fun things. From there, I had been working closely in the district initiatives, moving ELA specifically forward, when we moved out of the basal and into more of a workshop structure, and saw the opportunity to become an assistant principal and jumped on it. I felt like it was a super-good fit for me personally and also another step forward for me in my career. And then I've been at Sunset for four years and worked super collaboratively with the principal who had been there previously. And I'm super sad to see her go, but also thankful for the opportunity and the encouragement that the staff there has given me to take this step forward as well. I look forward to really building on what we've already been doing there for the last four years and continuing to push forward with all of our district initiatives. And we've really focused -- we recently qualified for targeted assistance in Title I and have really made a focus in SEL. So we have what we call a refocus room, so I'm really excited to get back into the building full-time and utilize that part that, you know, we weren't able to utilize as much last school year. But it's really important, and a part of what makes our school great is that we look at the whole child and not just the curriculum and the teaching and the learning part, but who the kids are as people as well.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Did anyone have any questions for Ms. Anderson? Ms. Odin?
First, I want to say congratulations. I remember when you interviewed for the assistant principal there. You certainly had a good model there as a principal. My question is, what do you see as the most important professional development we can give our elementary teachers going back after the pandemic?
I think looking at SEL for sure and the social aspect and taking that -- understanding that last year wasn't the same for every kid. Some thrived, some struggled. So really taking that perspective and looking at each individual child for sure. But also, we've had a lot of district initiatives and curriculum come forward, and even last year. So stepping back and retraining and looking and thinking about what best practices look like again. I think it's also really important for us to find where each child is. And we spent some time at the end of last school year finding where each student was instructionally, more so in reading because it's a little bit easier to target that spot. And we are ready to jump forward immediately when school starts utilizing our new guide of reading materials and being able to jump in and meet each child where they are and then fill in, you know, those gaps that are present all the time, but may be present a little bit more. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Andrews. Anyone else? Nope. Okay, I just have one quick question, and that's regarding our English language learners. I know you've been at this school for a long time now, four or five years. So I'm just curious about the composition of, like, English language learners at Sunset Heights and then a little bit about your plans going forward. I don't need numbers, just general. And I see that you've come with prepared. I'm really impressed.
It's tab number three. Yeah, four.
So as you know, we have reached an agreement with the Department of Justice to really ramp up our programming for English language learners. So I'm curious about what you think that will look like for Sunset Heights in the fall.
Yeah, so we have a large number of English language learners. And really, over the past, when we did our Title I plan, it asks for a lot of demographic information. And over the past six or seven years, there's been a huge growth in English language learners at Sunset. So it's definitely something that we have focused on already. I spent a good amount of the last part of the year talking about reviewing all of what came out of the DOJ findings. And our ELL teachers have already developed their schedule for next year. We have a building-wide schedule that allows us to plug in all of our interventions and supports and really be able to find the right time in each child's schedule to support them. We don't want to pull them out of, you know, core content areas and pull them out from that exposure in the academic language, but we also need to support them in areas that they need support in. So our building-wide schedule helps a lot with that, and our ELL teachers are ready to go. They have identified the students that we currently have, where they fall in the tiers, and what level of support they need, and are plugging that in. They have asked me not to change the master schedule, so if you're listening tonight, I'm not changing the master schedule. Because they spent a lot of time working on that and figuring out how that works for their day and the student's day, so that, you know, we're not pulling them out of snack. That's important. We're not pulling them out of times of their day where they get to interact socially. We're finding the best opportunity to give them that extra support.
Great, thank you so much. All right. I don't see any other hands, so thank you so much, Ms. Andrews.
Thank you. I'm so excited for this opportunity. I'm sorry, Anderson. I don't know where that came from. And I'm going to say hi to my kids. They're watching as well. Hello, how they.
Oh, go ahead, Ms. Timmons.
Congratulations. I'd like to make a motion to approve Erin Anderson, principal of Sunset Heights Elementary School for the 2021-22 school year at the annual salary of $93,250.
Second. Okay, the motion was by Ms. Timmons, seconded by Ms. Odin. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor of approving Ms. Anderson as the principal of Sunset Heights, indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, congratulations.
Yes, welcome. Well, not welcome, congratulations.
Okay. All right, so the next -- Dr. McKinney, we're going with people who are physically here and then Zoom? Okay. So the next person that I have for administrative recommendations for hires is Mr. Andrew Conrad. Welcome, Mr. Conrad. Mr. Conrad has been nominated to be hired as the newest assistant principal at Nashua High School North. I see that Mr. Burns is in the audience too. Hello, Mr. Burns. All right, so welcome, Mr. Conrad. So we'll kind of have the same format as we just put Ms. Andrews -- Anderson through. I don't know. It's been a day. So, Mr. Conrad, can you tell us a little bit about yourself?
All right. Hello, everyone. My name's Andrew Conrad. Most recently, I was an interim assistant principal at Alveron High School. Before I took that position in February, I was an eight-year physical education teacher, graduated from Keene State in 2013. Most recently, I graduated from Southern New Hampshire with my masters in education and educational leadership. I'm looking forward to furthering my career as a high school administrator, and I am really looking forward to joining the team here at Nashua North.
Okay, thank you. Welcome. So does anyone have any questions for Mr. Conrad? Go ahead, Ms. Odin.
Thank you. I had the honor to be on the interview team, so I know a little bit about Andrew. I think probably his biggest challenge will be finding blue ties for his closet instead of maroon. Is it the maroon?
Yes, a lot of maroon.
But what do you see as a new administrator here as your biggest challenge?
Yes, I was asked this in almost every interview I had, and I think the biggest challenge for me is going to be coming into a brand-new school and developing meaningful relationships, not only with students but also with staff. I pride myself on being someone that is able to build relationships with the people I work with, whether that is a student that attends Nashua North or a faculty member. I'm trying to build a meaningful, trustful relationship so that if there is a need for intervention or a need for conversation or guidance, that both myself and whoever I'm having that conversation with knows that I'm coming from a place of support, and I want that person to know that I want them to be as successful as possible. So the biggest challenge for me this first year will be building those meaningful relationships, and I look forward to the challenge.
Thank you, Mr. Conrad. Ms. Timmons?
Congratulations. I have both of my two that's at North now to watch today's meeting so they could see the assistant principal, but I don't know if you're going to be theirs. So what alphabet will you have?
I'm -- I don't think that, or at least I have not been told what alphabet I will have yet. But say it again? Q through Z.
Q.
Oh, none of them is in yours. Okay.
You'll have mine.
So did you just say that he'll have yours?
You'll have mine.
Oh, yay.
Awesome. Keep an eye on -- no, just kidding.
Okay, too bad. I'm going to say.
That is too bad. You'll have mine too when they get that old. It'll be interesting. Okay, so any other questions for Mr. Conrad? Yes, Ms. Zeeem?
I just -- I wasn't fortunate enough to be in that particular interview, but I heard great things from Mrs. Odin, and I have great respect for her opinions. And I know, I feel so great about the people that we're bringing tonight that I'm really encouraged for next year. And that's meaningful because, as you know, the pandemic gave us a terrible year. But have you had exposure to poverty, diversity, or have you always been in the -- I don't want to say yuppie schools. That's probably not a good word.
I have spent my entire career teaching in Hudson at Alveron High School. But I do say that I don't think it's a surprise. Any public school you go into, people are going to be challenged with different things, poverty being one of them. And I think, you know, as an administrator, I am going to be empathetic of everything going on in a student's life. I'm going to be understanding and caring. So it might be poverty here at Nashua North, but at Alveron, I dealt with many kids dealing with different things, and, you know, I approach all of those conversations and those relationships in the same way. I'm here to help. I'm here to help you be as successful as possible. So I look forward to bringing that same attitude here to Nashua.
But we look forward to getting to know you better and just more than welcome. We're just so glad you're here. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Okay. Everyone staring at me. All right, so I have two questions. The first one is about English language learning and how comfortable you are with that because, again, we have a partnership with the Department of Justice. There's quite a bit of training that all of our staff will need to go through, and I'm just curious about your thoughts on that. And then the second question is totally unrelated, and I noticed on your resume that you were doing your original vice-principalship during the pandemic. And I wonder if there's anything that you learned from that experience that you plan to apply this year.
All right, so answering the first question, I wouldn't say I have a ton of experience. We do have a small population at Alveron High School, English as a second language learners. I'm looking forward to learning much more about it and taking everything from any training that I can receive through the school district. So again, I'm approaching that situation with -- I'm ready for it, and I want to learn more about it, and I want to be as helpful as possible where I'm needed here at North. So, and then as far as the second question goes, it was an interesting time to take a new role at Alveron High School. Pandemic, schedule changes, hybrid model, students unhappy, teachers unhappy, parents unhappy. So I am very thankful for being able to have that experience. It was a whirlwind, but I think I learned a lot. Probably the biggest thing I took away from the pandemic, and Ms. Anderson said something about it, is not every kid had the same experience, not every teacher had the same experience or parents. I think it's going to be very important coming into school in the fall to be understanding of where kids are coming from, understand that every kid is going to be different, and they're going to need different support, and they're going to need different things. So I think being understanding and empathetic of where people are coming in, you know, some people are starting at point A, some people are starting at point B, but we're all trying to get to the same point C, which is being a successful learner and taking advantage of our education.
Great, thank you. I'm really excited about your energy for the fall, so hopefully you can keep it. Yay. All right, Ms. Timmons?
Again, congratulations. Too bad you're not going to be with one of mines. But anyway, I move to approve Andrew Conrad, assistant principal, Nashville High School North, for the 21-22 school year at an annual salary of $83,000.
Second. Okay, the motion was by Ms. Timmons, seconded by Ms. Odin, to approve Mr. Conrad as the newest assistant principal at Nashville High School North. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, so this afternoon, no, this morning, we were emailed another resume and in addition to our administrative recommendations, and that was for a new assistant superintendent for elementary. I'm sorry, Ms. Timmons, did you have a question?
No, I was joking. I said that looked like golf.
It does look like art.
Brilliant observation.
So I've lost my train of thought again. Okay, so, all right, so tonight we have before us a recommendation for our new assistant superintendent of elementary, and that is, I think, Dr. Kimberly Sarf?
Sarfi.
Sarfi. Sarfi? Okay. And so unfortunately, Ms. Sarfi couldn't make it here this evening, but she is with us on Zoom, so she's our first person trying out Zoom in the boardroom. So welcome and thank you for being our guinea pig. Ms. Sarfi, can you hear us?
I don't think she can.
She did like this, so I'm assuming she can't hear.
I don't think she can hear us.
I'm going to have to do a little relay, so if you have questions, let me say it to her, and she can speak.
Oh, that's what that $26,000 piece of equipment was for, was for the audio.
So just let her introduce herself, is that okay for the first one?
That would be great.
Jim.
Jim?
I don't -- do you have the microphone turned on in front of you, Carl? I mean, the room?
This one?
And the speakers are down.
Uh-oh. I heard it.
Did you?
There she goes.
I heard it. Uh-oh.
Good evening, Kim. How are you?
I'm well. Hi, thank you so much for having me here. I'm honored to be part of this meeting tonight.
Yes, well, thank you that you could join us virtually. Do you want to begin by just giving an overview of your career and your background?
Absolutely. So again, thank you so much for having me tonight. I am Kimberly Sarfi, and I've worked in education for a number of years in many different capacities. First, I'll start with my education background, my own education. I have a bachelor of liberal arts in English, and I also have a bachelor of liberal arts in psychology, both from University of Massachusetts. I also hold a master of arts degree in professional writing, and I hold a doctor of leadership degree in K-12 leadership. So yeah, in terms of my professional experience, I've worked as a Spanish teacher, an English teacher, a fifth-grade self-contained classroom teacher, I've worked as an ESL teacher, I've worked as an eighth-grade history teacher, served in many different capacities, all the way from elementary school until high school. And then in terms of my administrative experience, most of my administrative experience is in the area of curriculum and instruction. I will tell you that I am deeply committed to serving underrepresented populations, certainly very committed to serving our English language learners. The entire focus of my dissertation, the study that I conducted for several years, was all about best practices for English language learners and about just the benefits of bilingualism when it comes to academic achievement. So I'm really excited to be in Nashua specifically for that reason. And again, you know, my real focus is ensuring that all students achieve at the highest level, especially when it comes to literacy. I believe that literacy opens the doors to every content area, so that's another area where I'm very committed to. I'm not sure if I lost you, Dr. McKinney, because you're not on the screen anymore, but hopefully you all can see me.
Okay, great, thank you so much. Dr. McKinney, do you want to, like, turn it so she can see that there are people here listening to her than you? Does that help? All right, there we go. So you can see herself and the ceiling. All right, so, whoops, welcome, Dr. Sarfi. I was really excited to hear about all of the English language learner experience that she has. Really excited about that. And we'll open up the floor to questions. Oh my goodness. All right, Mr. Guarino, then Ms. Odin.
Hi, Ms. Sarfi, and welcome to our school district. I had a quick question about safe routes to schools. I just wanted to get your thoughts on safe routes to schools and how we can encourage more of our elementary school students to walk to and from school. My own experience with, because my kids went to Sunset Heights actually, is that a lot of the walkers, a lot of the students that are classified as walkers are really driven back and forth to school by their parents. So I just, walking back and forth to school helps kids. It gets them more active, it gets them more in the here and now, and they actually do better in class. Studies show that. So I just wanted to get your thoughts on the safe routes to school programs, if you have any experience in it, or what your thoughts are, how we can improve getting kids to walk or bicycle back and forth to our schools.
The question is about neighborhood schools and having kids walk and/or bike to schools, if you have any experience in that, and anything you can think of that might encourage kids to walk or bike to school and become more actively engaged in the school community.
Specifically, the safe routes to school program.
My experience, and can you hear me? Okay. So my experience in Lawrence is very similar to, and certainly in Haverhill as well, very similar to, I assume, what I'll be experiencing in Nashua. When it comes to neighborhood schools, especially in Lawrence, really, we only had, the only students who took buses were the K students otherwise, and then the high school students after school. Otherwise, all of our students walked to school or they rode their bikes to school. And when it comes to engaging students in, you know, just all parts of the school community, certainly interested in having after-school programs, partnerships with different community agencies, perhaps the YMCA, Boys and Girls Club, that sort of thing, is that I have a lot of experience in that area. And yeah, any chance we can get to have kids come into school, be part of the community.
Are you familiar with the Safe Roots program?
I'm actually not. I'm actually not familiar with Safe Roots, but I will be.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Oden?
Thank you, and welcome. You certainly have a ton of varied experiences. What do you see as your biggest challenge coming to Nashua and filling this position?
The question is, what do you see the biggest challenge coming to Nashua and filling in for this position?
Well, certainly. I mean, you know, it's a big position. Obviously, Dr. McKinney, you are very familiar with this position. So that is certainly, I think, an advantage because we'll be working next door to each other. But just in terms of getting to know all of the individuals who work within the school district, that's going to be, not necessarily a challenge, but that's certainly going to be a high priority. I definitely want to find out about your program for English language learners and what that looks like. And so again, that'll be a high priority for me as well.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Go ahead, Ms. Seem?
I don't have a question, but I would just like to say that this, I was so impressed by this lady. She tells you more by accident. I mean, it's like you'd ask her a question, and she had so much she wanted to share with you that she couldn't speak fast enough, very passionate. And I'm so looking forward. I really think, I think that it's going to be a great fit. I think that she and Dr. McKinney will work well together, and I see it as a real, I see it as a real step forward for the school, for the district. So I would just like, I just want her to know how happy I am. She's going to be joining us.
Well, you can watch it for yourself, but the board member who's on the committee is just saying great things about you.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate that. Thank you. I have to say, everybody who was on the committee was just absolutely amazing. One of the reasons why I'm really excited to be here.
I'm going to wait till you get to know them all, and then we'll see if you keep saying no.
Okay, great. All right. So if there are no more questions, I am, do you have it, Ms. Timmons?
I don't have that one.
I'm looking for a motion to approve Dr. Kimberly Sarfi as the assistant superintendent for elementary level at an annual salary of $116,500. So moved? Okay, so it was Ms. Johnson and Ms. Oden this time. Okay, so all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So congratulations, Dr. Sarfi, and welcome.
Thank you so much, everybody. I'm so incredibly excited. Thank you so, so much for this opportunity.
Okay. And thank you for being here.
Thank you, guys. Take care.
All right, bye.
Dr. McKinney, I didn't ask earlier, when people were here and she was still on, because I didn't think about it, but do you know the start dates for everyone who's coming on board? Will it be soon?
I don't know them all off the top of my head, but I'm most excited. Dr. Sarfi will be getting next Monday, so that's.
Oh, that's soon.
Yes. So after that, we can get back to you on the other two, yes.
Okay. All right. That's exciting. Okay, so that takes care of item one on our agenda for this evening. Item two is the personnel recommendations that everybody received in their packets. Does anyone need a non-public for questions about this, or are we ready to have a motion to approve it? Okay. And I'm looking for a motion to approve the personnel recommendations. Ms. Timmons?
Yes, I move to approve the personnel recommendation dated July 12, 2021, as presented with 34 entries.
Okay. Second. Okay, great. So on the motion to approve the personnel recommendations dated July 12, 2021, with 34 entries, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that passes nine to zero as well. We are on a roll this evening. Okay, so the only other item I have on our agenda is a non-public item, and I don't believe we will be needing to take any votes after this item. Ms. Oden has a question, and Ms. Timmons had her hand up first.
That was just for the 34 teachers. We now need to do the administrative recommendations?
We did those already.
Oh, we did those?
Individually.
Can I do them again?
No.
Thank you.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes, I know this is July, and I was hoping that the HR committee would have another special meeting within two weeks, maybe before the full board meeting, because we do have hires that we need to get in. So I'm just.
No, I, in speaking, Mrs. Timmons has interviews this week, and so do I. So there will definitely be, I'm sure they'll want to get those moving as quickly as possible as well.
When I was speaking with Dr. McKinney today, I think he indicated that there would probably be an HR before the meeting on the 26th, either that evening or not. Maybe I just assumed based on our regular schedule?
Actually, there is an HR meeting scheduled on the 26th before the full board.
Okay, great.
Is that soon enough or not soon enough, or is that okay? Or should we have one before then? I mean.
No, I think that'll be good for the next, we have two more administrative positions that I'm thinking of, so that would work out just fine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And Ms. Carey, please let us know, well, Dr. McKinney, and then us, let know if you need more special meetings to approve new hires, because we want to make sure that we onboard people quickly and we don't lose them.
Absolutely. That's why I was asking that question.
Yeah, no poaching of people we want.
Exactly. So we want to get those in and hired as quickly as possible.
All right, great. And thank you both for coming out this evening. I appreciate it. And we will see you on the 26th. Okay, great. All right. So did we have any other public? Ms. Oden?
Well, I just wanted to say, in the past, we didn't have HR committees, per se, meetings in the summer, but we could call a special board meeting as long as five board members were there, we could do hiring, because it's difficult to get people to a committee meeting and then to a board meeting. So I want Dr. McKinney to know that if he needs something like that, because at this time of the year, you don't want to lose candidates. So that can be done. That's been done in the past, and I just wanted to make everybody aware of that. Thank you.
We just need 24 hours' notice to the public. It's polite to do more than that, like if we can do a few days, but we need at least 24 hours' notice and five people. But I don't know about the rest of you guys, but I don't have any fun plans this summer because it's just post-COVID. So I think everyone's nodding along. I think a lot of us are just not going anywhere fun this summer. So we're available for special meetings. Yay. Okay. Any other questions or comments before we go into non-public?
Can, I would just, you know, I feel like I need to acknowledge, I was saying about this lady that we just hired for the assistant superintendent, but I was also privileged to be in your interviews. And I just, I really feel like I have to give Dr. McKinney has managed, McKinney has, I'm getting all balled up. I'm getting emotional because he did such a wonderful job, and you were certainly impressive. I look forward to working with you because, like this wonderful lady that you deserve to speak, it was very obvious that you had good experiences that you, and that you've learned and learned. There's nothing better than experience to make you good at what you do, in my view. Knowledge, book knowledge is wonderful, but without experience, it's not nearly as powerful. And I think we've gotten some really powerful experience with both you and she. So welcome, and I look forward to getting to know you.
Those should be your kind words.
You deserve them.
Okay, great. And we will train you on the microphone so that we get all your words.
You'll get used to it.
Jimmy's giving me a look, like, because we didn't get any of that on the tape. Okay. All right. So at this time, I am, oh, I put away my thing. I'm looking to go into non-public under RSA 91A32.
B.
B. Yeah. No, not B, A. A is the promotion, compensation, et cetera, et cetera.
So moved?
Second.
Okay.
Jimmy said he needed a couple of minutes to just switch over.
Yep. Okay. So we'll take the vote, though. All in favor of going into non-public, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. It is 6:45.